Talking about is spot on. If you could bring us something back, the idea of having some nice, you know, custom homes on some lots inside your winery there, I think would be appealing not only for you guys, but also for public consumption, you know, from the standpoint of living in that kind of atmosphere. So I personally, I think I could find favor with that if everything were to mesh together with your engineering and so forth.
Yeah.
So I think what Kevin was talking about was whether or not you'd want to even put this at the table any further because you can withdraw this, or you could, you could ask us to vote on it.
I think I'm going to follow Kevin's advice.
You'll have to get with Kevin and just decide what to do and...
Yeah, I think I'd like to go ahead and withdraw, withdraw it, follow his advice.
Counselor, if he decides to withdraw, we wouldn't be taking any further action from our perspective, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, because we won't be voting on a deferral at this point unless we withdraw.
You can bring it back at your leisure whenever you, you know, whenever you would think you're ready.
Okay.
We'd be glad to take a look at it then.
Yeah, we'd encourage you to do so.
Yeah, and I agree, we'll be excited to see what you come up with.
Absolutely.
It'll be a nice picture.
Okay.
Kevin, a couple of questions.
Okay.
Uh, sewer, how close to that property will sewer come?
Well, we're kind of working through some things with the Lynnwood folks on exactly how there's, you know, the original approval was for a forced main, which would actually be on the right of way of Amble Road.
Okay.
Um, we would prefer doing a gravity sewer down Stewart Creek, so that's really where we're trying to get to. That's still in the, it's being worked out, yes.
Time frame, time frame, is it a year away, two years away?
Uh, that's...
Ten years away?
That's a good question, too.
Good question.
I honestly don't know right now. I couldn't tell you.
What they're wanting to do could hinge on possibly what sewer is at, what their expenses are going to be and things like that as well.
Sure, absolutely.
You know, so, and time frame, if they're looking at three, four years down the road and it's a two-year, three-year sewer project, you know, it may be that long before they, so they're not pressed on time.
Right, I don't think they're pressed for time from that sewer standpoint, no.
But technically, they could go ahead and bring it to us and get it approved and then do it at their...
Phases, right?
Sure, absolutely.
But right now, there's just one small home there, I think on the main road that's probably on sewer, on Septic. Is that correct?
There is, there is a building in the back, too.
It's all Septic out there.
I think it is all Septic, though, yes, it's all Septic.
And you bring up a good point, I think Mike does, because without sewer out there, could you get enough soils for lots and Septics? Probably not, it's pretty rocky out there. And you wouldn't want to do a step system for eight or 10, 12,000.
Yeah, you'd want to...
Cost, it's not cost effective.
Yeah, sewer is where they, how they would rather do it, I'm sure, it would make more sense.
By that time also, CUD should have their station up and online for water flow.
Prob, I would hope so, yeah.
Yeah. Hope that helps.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Okay, item B, rezoning request. Jamie Gonzalez, 815 Rock Springs Road, rezoning C, I'm sorry, R3 to C2. Kevin?
This is 815 Rock Springs Road, it's about 4.81 acres. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R3, R6, which would be across Rock Springs Road from the site, and then also is adjoining C2 as well. Landage plan would support a medium density, single-family here. Again, similar to the last request, there is no onsite sewer access. Development would require an easement across one of the adjoining properties of Frontal Nashville Highway. And as well, water line that is, there is an existing six-inch water line along Rock Springs Road, but it doesn't have adequate airflow for commercial uses. So if this was rezoned, they would have to look at extending a water line. There's a couple of different locations that they could tie onto and that'd be extended to serve this site. There's a couple options with that. Similar request, this is a request for zoning, it's just a C2 zoning. They are, the proposed use that he was thinking about, but there could be other things as well, but he was looking at some sort of event venue, but there are, obviously, C2 would be much more open than just that, certainly. And I guess that's all that I've got. There is an existing house on the property that's, was looking at being taken down, I believe. There's several through there, I think this one has one as well. That's, that's what I, all that I have.
Question for Kevin.
Kevin, did you hear from any of the residents around the area when you...
We had not heard from anyone, no.
Do we have a proposed usage for this?
Yeah, the application, which is on the right side of the packet there, has a, it's, they were looking at a couple, an event venue. I think there was some other potentially, I mean, he's looking at some other things, because there's some acreage there. He, he has a company, his own company, he thought about maybe an office headquarters for him, but also I think there's other things as well, you know, that he's, he's got ideas that, I think the banquet hall event center is his main focus right now, but there could be other things, certainly.
Do you have any insight into the easement on, on Old Nashville Highway? You said he would need one, but...
He would have to, he would have to obtain an easement to tie, to extend sewer, because that's how it would have to come, the sewer would have to come through, through one of those adjoining parcels there. There's a couple of options, two or three options he has there. I don't have any insight beyond, talking about utilities, I'm sure he would have to have one. That's, that's all that I, I know.
The C2 lot beside of that is empty right now, correct?
Yes.
Nothing there?
And that area was zoned, the area where the Dollar General, the auto parts store, all those things, that all kind of came in somewhat together. And that parcel that kind of has frontage on Rock Springs Road, it really was included at that time. And has never developed, obviously.
Kevin, what's, what's staff's opinion of C2 zoning here?
You know, it is, it does join C2 and a couple sides. You know, you are getting close to, to some residential areas. I know when that, the, the C2 piece that fronts Rock Springs Road at that time, there was discussion that that, when that came through, you know, should that be C4 and not C2? Ultimately, it was recommended as C2 and approved as C2. You know, I mean, you're starting to get into the gray area where C2 might not be as appropriate. But the proposed use, reason part for the C2 request, that is, for his proposed use, would have to have a C2 zoning, C4 wouldn't work. And so, but again, if once it's C2, it, it could be anything C2, certainly. I think it's, you're getting a little bit far down Rock Springs Road to where you would see a tremendous amount of commercial development unless, I mean, there was talk at one point, people were looking at, maybe looking at putting all, there's four tracks there, putting all four of those together and doing something bigger. But that's, and it makes, you know, might happen, but makes it, that's not the plan right now, so. I mean, again, you're getting, you've got two more tracks before you're going to be completely against a residential subdivision. So I mean, I think you're getting, you're getting certainly into more of a gray area where C2 is appropriate, I think. And again, on Rock Springs Road, this has, at least as it's set up currently, its only access is Rock Springs Road, not Old Nashville Highway. So it's a little bit different from a, an access standpoint, traffic flow standpoint as well.
So is your concern then, we're not, we may either need a step down, maybe from a C2 to a C4 if we were looking at this, or if we had a, a PUD where we were, I guess, maybe, could we be more, I know we could be more limiting as far as what goes there.
Sure.
But with, could we do things additionally in the way of buffers or whatnot to continue to soften that line between that property and going to R3?
I mean, you could, I mean, he would be required to have that buffer on the, the east side, certainly, as it's set up currently. You know, certainly, he could, he could request a PUD, some sort of PUD, to do just an event center or whatever, whatever other uses he's got in mind. I think he was wanting a little bit of flexibility, though, from my discussions with him, because he has, he's looking at retail, even asked about storage. I said, there's no storage, wouldn't be allowed in C2.
Right.
You know, but, I mean, a PUD that has a, some sort of climate-controlled storage element or something, might be some, that'd be an option for him, certainly, to at least request it. I think he's looking at it as an investment, as a businessman, and trying to figure out, you know, again, his initial use, his idea, his thought initially at least, is for this event venue setup.
We just kind of opened it up to a lot of different things.
He would open it up to a lot of different things with C2.
Well, we just had that discussion the last week.
Right. And this is, I mean, again, your frontage, again, if you had several tracks there, if someone was putting it all together and it was going to front Old Nashville Highway, and it, it might make more sense that way than this way, potentially. That's, you know, and that's just, that's, this is, the situation is, as it is today, it's, it only has access to Rock Springs Road. So, which is, that location, just a two-lane road, so.
Well, if he did it, I'm sorry, somebody said, go ahead.
I was going to say, how do you feel about the traffic flow with that being a commercial area feeding into Rock Springs Road? I mean, as a banquet center, you know, times are the time of an event.
It could be heavy.
Kind of dictate the traffic, but if it became some other commercial space, then you're competing with the resident, residential traffic.
Right. I mean, I think that is, that would be my, that is one of the concerns I have because there is no, again, no frontage, no access to Old Nashville Highway, which is a five-lane road there. A C2 use, it's, like you said, an event center that you might have, be busy in the evening or something like that, but a C2 zoning, it could be a lot of other things that could have a lot, much more impact on the traffic. Of course, depending on the use, it could fall into a traffic study requirements that we would have, and we could look at improvement in turn lanes and those kind of things, but...
It's sort of a strange piece, really, for, for a lot, several uses, one being this one because of the, you know, the ingress and egress is right there, Rock Springs, and that's it.
That's it.
Right? And so if somebody were to bring it in, say, like an R6, it's kind of the same dilemma. You've got a lot of traffic going into that at one site. Personally, I'd kind of like to see it brought in as a, maybe a PCD or something like that, where we could know what it is and...
And the other thing, too, it's such a long, it's just such a narrow piece, really. You know, if you have that depth of C2, it's, it's kind of an odd, I mean, he's had, I've seen a couple of little concept drawings, and it's, you have a building, and then you go around that building and have another parking lot with another building behind it, and it's kind of just, it's an odd setup just because of the nature of the, how the property is. Doesn't mean it can't work, I mean, I've seen it, but a C2, a building behind a building doesn't really work so well. There's no visibility there unless it's some sort of office or something like that that's not, doesn't need the visibility.
What would you say the width of that parcel is at its widest?
Oh, gosh, I didn't really look at that.
Just guess.
It's, I'm going to guess, hmm, probably 150 to 200 feet would be my guess. That's a total, total guess, really.
It's old, it's old homestead there, I'm sure, or part of one, and...
Yeah.
It's a, it's a little hard to get the width out of that to even do, I don't know, maybe a, a church of some kind or whatever. I mean, even that is narrow for a building that has such a big footprint.
I mean, you just...
That would be the type of venue maybe good for a, a small church, you know, with the parking in the front, parking in the back.
You could orient the, the building, kind of a longer, more narrow building or something like that, it might work, you know.
Kevin, I remember when we brought in the, the corner piece there in C2, but I don't think anything has ever been proposed there, has it?
No.
You know, I, I know we changed it, but I don't think there was any official...
We've never had a site plan of any kind submitted for it or anything, no.
My concern with this piece is just that it's got the neighboring C2, and as, as Andrew was just saying about Rock Springs Road, is the, the traffic that one would cause, but both of them, if they do develop out, granted, we'd still have to go to the site plan, but, but especially right there where it is with the curve. I like your idea, Mark, of more of a, a planned piece of this, but I understand, you know, the property owner doesn't necessarily know, but as you said, you know, maybe even a PNO would make, would make more sense there.
It's just you're giving, you're giving blanket openness...
Yeah.
To what you don't know what it could wind up being with the issues we've just talked about. I mean, we know what his idea is, we know what the owner's idea is, but...
Kevin, with being that wide at the back, what about the front? Because it's a lot narrower.
Yeah, and again, I don't, I'm...
If you had to put a lane in to get in and out of that place...
That looks about 100 feet or so.
Is that enough?
Yeah, I'm thinking it might narrow to as much as 100 or so. It, it may be more than 200 at the back, because it does get pretty wide at the very back. It might get to more of a 250 or 300 even, but...
If it, if it is an event place, and they've got people in there till nine or 10 o'clock at night, and everybody has to be out by a certain time, then you've got a lot of traffic getting out at one point.
Right.
You know?
And you might could have two access points, but it's still going to hit...
Yeah.
Pretty narrowly at, at one space, yeah.
Any further questions?
I think based on our discussion, I would make a motion to deny the request of C2.
I'd second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to deny the request to rezon the C2. Any further discussion or questions?
I, I think I'd just like to see a plan of what, what it would look like.
Yeah, PCD of some kind would probably make us all feel better.
Okay. All in, all in favor of denying this rezoning request, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is denied. Okay, next, under rezoning request, we have Dr. Egbert Ribario for Pinto Place Townhomes, Pinto Drive, rezoning C2 to PRD.
Yes, this is a rezoning request on Pinto Drive. It's 2.14 acres, currently zoned C2. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R4 and C2. And the future landage plan would support a mix of office, retail, and multifamily here in this area. The proposed PRD, and your comments there, it says 28 units. It has actually been reduced to 27. We do have a couple paper copies. We, we didn't get, revised digital copies came in today, and we printed out a couple of them. We do have those, if you look at them, it's the same basic layout, but it does have a little bit of changes, mainly again, going from 28 units to 27 units. But we did have a couple of comments regarding utilities on this as far as the water line extension, they have to come from Joyner Drive to serve this lot. And then gravity sewer also have to go over to Joyner Lot, Joyner Drive as well. So, and they're aware of those. We had a couple of comments regarding some dimensions on the eastern property line. That one has been addressed. Comment number seven was really just for information services, purposes, that a type C buffer strip is required along all property lines other than along Pinto Drive, because it does, this would be residential next to commercial on part of it, and resi, or equivalent of an R6 adjacent to R4 on part of it as well. We did ask them to label the building materials on the rear and side elevations. And then our last comment, we, we did make a comment that we were concerned regarding the density. The end unit of one of the buildings along Pinto Drive is only approximately 15 to 20 feet off. Another building has an end unit that's only 15 feet from the adjoining property line. That is the one unit they, they have removed. And so that issue has been addressed because there is more room there. You know, with the 15-foot buffer, and it's only 15 feet from the, from there, there would be no way to even get around the building. We did recommend a reduction in units to provide a better end product. And so, and they did go from 28 to 27. So it went from 13.08 units per acre to 12.6 units per acre with that reduction. So the, the map that is on the screen there does have the, again, it's the same basic layout, same, really same amount of parking and all that. It's just they did remove that one unit that would be next to the parking lot that is the rear parking of the adjoining nursing home that fronts on In-N Spring Road. That's where the, they removed this, the one unit there, so. Again, for comparison, I did look at a couple of comparisons. This is a, as it's proposed now, 12.6 units per acre. Just for comparison, Lee Crossing on Lee Victory is about nine and a half per acre. Cantor Farms is about 7.3. Cedar Top Villas, which is the one you looked at last month, is about eight and a half per acre. And Cedar Creek, which is one, a new one that's proposed on, what was, now In-N Spring Road, was on Rocky Fork Road, is about 8.14. That's just so for comparison's sake, it's, this is about three units or more per acre more dense than the typical townhome development we see. So that's, that's kind of why typically townhomes are more in the eight to 10 units per acre kind of deal, so. Now, they are meeting our requirements for open space and all that, so I mean, they're, they're meeting those requirements. But that was our, our concern that we, we raised with it, so. They're here, obviously, to, to, can answer any questions that you all may have as well.
Kevin, how many more units would they have to pull out to get down to that number?
They probably need to get down to about 20. 20 units per acre is about 9.3.
Okay.
So...
So they were at 28, they're now 27, so they need to potentially...
They'd have to get down to 20 to get to a, to a similar density, yeah.
Okay. They bring it in as a PRD, I guess technically it would have fallen under an R6.
Yeah, any townhome project would, yes.
Yeah, so this is less than R6 allows, right?
It is less than R6 allows, yes. R6 would be about 14 and a half per acre would be the max, yeah.
Kevin, do you know what the size of the individual townhome is?
1,100 square feet is the minimum.
You know, typically on, I think some, especially some of the townhomes you've mentioned, we've had garages and two-car parking pads. And if you're kind of taking this on surface, it looks like it's all exterior parking.
It is, there are no garages proposed, yes.
Okay. And taking that into consideration, is parking adequate, not only for residential, but, you know, we always want adequate parking for visitors or, or non-residents when they're there?
Yeah, there's, I think there's 60, 63 spaces, I believe. I'm trying to get to that sheet. Yeah, there's 60, 63 total spaces. At 27 units, two per unit would be 54. So then there's about nine spaces beyond the strict zoning requirement. So about one extra space per three units at 27 units.
Are these units for sale?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, to further that question, can they be rented as well?
Certainly they could be, yes, but they would, they are going to be a for-sale product.
That's the purpose.
Yes.
Tim, I think you brought up a really good point about the product we've seen coming in that's, that's made it through, we're more garage-oriented with driveways and setbacks and, which is not what this is.
And even with removing the one unit, the, the density still is a concern to me.
If you could give us your name and address, please.
Yes, I'm Clyde Roundrick, Hudson Steel Engineering. I'm representing Dr. Ribero on this particular project. And I hear you as far as the overall density concerns, and that's something we can address. I, I think it's important in this particular project to really look at the context of what it's around. It's around, it's, he, he feels like it's, by bringing in new construction and really kind of fronting the roads like we're doing from an aesthetic standpoint, hiding the parking, it'll really kind of bring a really fresh approach to this particular site. There's a lot of apartments around it that are, the good thing is some of them are being remodeled, but some of them are in pretty bad shape. And then we're kind of getting the backside of, of, of the commercial buildings along Lowry Street. And so it's a, when I drove through it, it's a very peculiar kind of site. And, and the shape of it also, I've probably done three or four different tries at trying to master plan it because it's literally a triangular site. So it's, it's a little, a little bit of a chicken and egg for him in terms of going, I would like to try to maximize the profitability of the site, but at the same time, it almost doesn't lend itself towards any kind of traditional kind of organization. You can just see it, just, it's just super different. So with that in mind, we did increase the density, but it, but we had to make the units a little bit smaller to kind of deal with the overall complexities of just the geometry of the site. So I, I think it's fitting consistently with what's kind of, it's, it's an up, it's upgraded from the adjacent relationships. It's enhancing kind of an area that looks like it's just kind of a no man's land as far as if you drove out there. And we're really up against commercial on, I mean, and not only commercial, but the, the backside of commercial. So it's not a, it's not going to drive probably from an economic standpoint, kind of a higher-end two-car, two-car garage type of unit. It, it's going to be much more consistent, more, it'll be new and fresh, and they'll look great, and he's very concerned about the aesthetics. But we're up against, we're just up against very old and dated apartments that are two-story parking out front, and they just are not. It's a little bit more of a, he's kind of creating a transition, in my opinion, from commercial to those apartments with something that would be, be nicer. My concern is, and his concern is, is how nice can they be and still be in the market? Because we would love to do two-car, you know, bigger units, two-car. We want to make sure, again, aesthetically, we're not dropping off, but, but he's kind of landing in a neighborhood that's going to only have a certain type of price point at the end of the day. So that's kind of, I want to give you a little logic as far as where the density came from, the size of the units, and looking at more as an infill than, than kind of a, a really kind of like a new construction area. Kind of, it's a much, it feels very dated, the area it's actually landing in. So hopefully it'll catalyze some new growth and some upgrade into the surrounding apartments.
And I think from the commission's perspective and even the council's perspective, we, we're really trying to promote or have consistency in what's being built. And you make, you know, you make a point, it's a new build. So we're trying to be consistent because when we look at something like this, and if we were approve it, you know, if we were to approve it with the amount of density, then it kind of flies in the face of what we've done with other areas. And, you know, there are maybe not exact, but there are some comparable areas where you have a mix of commercial and... you have a mix of commercial and, and residential. Some of the commercial is newer, some of it's older. But what we're, again, what we're trying to do is, you know, it's twofold. It's, it's to have a quality product, have a consistent product, and, you know, in my opinion, make sure we have a safe product, you know, when we're, especially when we're looking at setbacks from, you know, roadways and, you know, even some of the side setbacks from the adjacent properties.
And I, I think if, at this point, it's probably best for us to go back to the drawing board as far as the density is concerned and, and see if we can create a little bit more separation between the adjacent properties. I just know that there's going to be kind of a, it'll be, it's up to Dr. Rivera, but I just know there's a point, after kind of laying it out as many times as I have, that there's, there's kind of a sweet spot as far as his, his density that I think will be, you know, something where he can build it and actually move forward with something that's new and fresh.
It's an odd piece, it's an odd shaped piece.
It's just, yeah, it's, it's literally one of those stranger pieces I've worked on since working at Hudson Steel, so. But I do feel like I'm up here arguing for it because I think it's something that would really be positive for that, that little piece of, of the world. Because it's, it's a very, just as much as that lot's odd, it's kind of, the location is really kind of lending itself towards multifamily in the same sense of fashion that we're proposing.
I appreciate your explanation around your, you know, design choices and the reason why on the size and not having the garage. And I absolutely agree with you on the location, the transition that you're doing in the area. It's just the total number that is more of a concern to me, so I would appreciate if you could kind of look at that. I'm not asking you to make them bigger or, you know, add more elements to them, just kind of look at what the number is that would make it work.
And Kevin and planning staff brought that up. So we did, we reduced it because there was a pressure point that we created, and we'll pull that number back down. So I'll go ahead and withdraw it for now, and we'll come back. But, but we're probably coming back a little higher than, if you understand the kind of our logic, if we come back a little bit higher than ten minutes per acre potentially, we're going to see. I'll do my best.
Yeah, and I would encourage you while you're doing that to be in close, you know, communication with Kevin and get, you know, staff's feel on that because I know that, you know, we as a planning commission and then certainly Kevin and his office as a council, you know, we're all trying to strive. And I think when you hear from Kevin and he makes his recommendations and whatnot, he's making it, you know, based upon experience from what he's seeing from here, what he's seeing from council and what we're doing in the community. I think there's a possibility that, you know, we can marry all this and you can get something done here.
Right.
But I would encourage you to work closely with Kevin as you're going forward on this.
Yeah, and I would add to that. With the development that's taking place on Lowry Street, and I know how you mentioned what's around it and how it looks, and it's going to be better than that, well, the goal is for that whole area to be improved. So you have an opportunity to go beyond based on what's, what we're perceiving or, you know, have as a vision right now. So just try to include that as well.
We'll do it.
Clyde, you mentioned the apartments around it, right? And I think that's, I'm speaking for me, I think that's not the look we're looking for. And without garages and driveways and things like that, personally, it makes me feel like we're just adding more of that. So that's feedback for you.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yep. So you have withdrawn.
Yeah, we'll officially withdraw, and we'll come back after meeting with Kevin and kind of rework our density out and see what we can do. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, that should conclude rezoning. We should be on to item C preliminary plats. The first item is Hidden Hills St. Francis Avenue Extension. St. Francis Avenue, owner developer CFIJ LLC.
Yes, this is a plat that is essentially just a, they're not creating new lots really, they're just extending a roadway. Currently St. Francis Avenue, which was built in multiple different subdivisions actually, but this piece of it was a part of the Hidden Hills subdivision. And then, of course, we have very recently finished the extension of Enan Springs Road over towards Rocky Fork Road. And so now this road connection really needs to be made. This will make this happen. This is all property, is all zone C two, has been zoned that way for many years. We had a few comments, comments one and two are standard comments that would, would need to remain. Comment number three regarding extending sewer to the west side of St. Francis Avenue show that in the correct location, that has been addressed and so can be removed. There is an existing water line on the west, eastern side of Enan Springs Road West, and they have shown that and is correctly as a twelve-inch line. The north arrow was pointing to the west and they did correct that. And then the title block, they had spelled out Saint, and so we did ask them to correct that, and it is, because it is S T period, and so they have taken care of that. There is a little bit of an odd partial boundary shown, and they have shown that correctly now. There's a, and so, but by putting the road through, you are, would be creating some lots that are certainly less than five acres. And so what they will be doing would be to combine all that together. And so, and that can be done by deed because they're big enough now that can be done. And so that will have to be done prior to the final plat approval. And so we, I basically want to keep kind of the last sentence of comment number seven regarding those being combined before final plat approval. We can take out the first piece of it. And then we do still need to get construction plans, which will be before final plat as well. So, comment one, two, the last part of seven, and then number eight. Everything else is in order.
Questions for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
Need to approve staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Final plats. Hidden Hills, section five, phase one.
This is the final plat of the, one of the, the next two items or both items you looked at on preliminary plats last month. This is Montefay Drive and Percival Street. This is R three zone, eight lots. We had just a couple of comments, one to add to, the owner's signature for the plat is, can be recorded. And then, then just to work with the USPS regarding a mail kiosk. Actually had a request from the developer and I haven't been able to, to act on this yet. Asked for my help and working with the US Postal Service on this one because you can't get them to call him back. So these, so it's, it's had a little issues there, but that's, so we just need to work through that with them on the mail kiosk.
We discussed that. Was it for here or was it elsewhere?
It was actually a different one, a different subdivision, but we were able to work through that issue and get that corrected on a different subdivision, a different developer completely, but, so I guess, so I was able to solve that when they've asked me to work on this one too. But anyway, so that's still an issue we got to get, get work, work through, so. So just those two comments would all we would have left.
Questions for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
Need to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next we have Hidden Hills, section six, phase one, McGrath Drive and Summerlin Road.
This is, again, just one you looked at last month on preliminary plat. This is eighteen lots, seven acres, and the R three zone. Again, the same two comments regarding the owner's signature and the postal service kiosk. Everything else is in order.
Questions for Kevin or staff? Do I have a motion?
Need to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, so I have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Kevin, on the next two items, I need to step away from the conversation here, so I'm going to let Vice Chairman Atkins take these.
Okay, let me go ahead. Okay. The next item is the Lee Bowman subdivision. It's a re-subdivision of Lot Two. This is on Potomac Place and Sammerly Parkway West. It's two lots, two point one acre C two zoning. This is just a re, kind of a re-subdivision dedication of some new easements for this lot, create these two lots here. We had a couple of comments, relatively standard comments regarding the owner's signature. And then they have addressed comment number two regarding the slope easement width, and so that has been addressed, so it can be removed from the comments. And that's all that I have.
Easy enough. Questions for Kevin? No questions? Do we have a motion?
Need to approve with staff comments.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? With one extension. Record me is not voting, so. And the next one, we'll just let you keep going with that, Kevin. We're going, we're into site plan.
I got this, the, this is the-
Mitch, I'm sorry.
Sorry, this is the site plan for that re-subdivision you just looked at. Lot Two A within the Lee Bowman subdivision, approximately one point one five acres at five sixty Sammerly Parkway West on the corner of the Potomac Place extension and West Sammerly Parkway. Prepped the zone C two. Atkins proposing for a gas station with convenience store for this site. Would have two ingress and egress locations, one on Potomac Place and one via joint access easement from a future road as planned to be built north of the proposed site. Joint access easement will be shared between the site and the adjoining development on Lot Two B. Vehicle use area for the site, applicants proposing for thirty-two thousand nine hundred ninety square feet, which would require landscaping of three thousand two hundred nine nine square feet. Applicants proposing for thirty-five hundred square feet, so they are meeting that requirement. Total parking required forty-seven spaces, proposing forty-eight. And handicap, they are meeting that requirement with two spaces shown. Landscape plan shows variety of trees and shrubs to be planted along Potomac Place and the future private road frontage and in landscape islands surrounding the building. Shrubs are proposed to be planted along Sammerly Parkway. Architecture elevations show a mixture of brick and stone veneer on the east, south, and west elevations with full brick on the northern elevation. Couple standard comments as normal, and then we had two staff comments. Staff comment one regarding the trash company schedule trash removal during non-peak operation hours for this business. The rear of the site where the dumpster location is located, it's a rather tight turning motion for a trash truck, so that was our concern. We just wanted to make sure the trash is picked up non-peak hours so we didn't have any vehicles back there while the trash trucks trying to maneuver throughout the site. And then staff comment two regarding the trees within the sewer easement, that comment has been addressed. The applicant did remove all those trees out of the sewer easement along Sammerly and left shrubbery up front. And with that, staff would recommend approval.
Have you addressed the dumpster issue already with them?
We more, more or less left as a standard comment, something that we haven't heard back yet on, but we'll want to leave just to ensure that they do that.
Okay. The staff's comfortable with all the ingress and egress locations?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, the ingress egress on Potomac is going to be directly across from the ingress egress to the bank that's already there, so that's, that's a good location.
I like the fact it's, I think Mr. Cole will like the fact there's no EFS, is there? If he's watching, that's just teasing H G a little bit, so. All right, any questions for Mitch or Kevin? If none, do we have a motion?
Need to approve with comments.
Have a motion and a second.
Second.
It's a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll turn it back over to the chair.
Mitch, you do have me again.
Yep.
Not participating or standing for vote. Okay. Thanks, Mark. Next on site plan, Ashley Grove Apartments, four seventeen Enan Springs Road West. Owner developer, Ashley Grove LLC.
This is a plan you guys saw last year. Their site plan expired, so they have resubmitted the same plan. It is proposed for the existing Ashley Grove Apartments complex, which is located at four seventeen Enan Springs Road East, sits on about twelve point oh one acres. Property zone R six, they are proposing to add an additional two apartment buildings to the site. Currently, there's an existing one hundred and twenty-eight units, and they're proposing for an additional forty-six units to the site, which would essentially max out the density for this lot. Surrounding zoning consists of R two, C two, and C four, and as proposed, site may be accessed from the existing entrance and exit off Enan Springs Road. Vehicle use area proposing forty thousand one hundred ninety-five, required landscaping of four thousand nineteen square feet. They are proposing for nine thousand two hundred and twenty-two square feet, meeting the requirement. Total parking required for the additional buildings is ninety-two spaces. With the existing two thirty-three, they're planning on removing fourteen with, to allow for reconfiguration of the site. Adding back one hundred and forty-nine yields a total of three hundred and sixty-eight spaces. Handicap parking based on the nine-two required to be added, four spaces would be required for handicap, they're proposing for six, so meeting that requirement as well. Landscape plan shows variety of trees to be planted around new parking areas and shrubs planted around the base of the new buildings. Architecture elevations show primary materials to be used of fiber cement and secondary material brick on the first level of the new buildings. Couple standard comments, staff comments as well. Some of these may have been addressed. Other departments didn't have a chance to look at it in time before the meeting, so some of them may have been addressed, but we'll read them out anyway. Staff comment one, submit a soil study submitted by the state certified soil scientist to verify the receiving soils beneath the pavers are enough, are porous enough to accept rainfall seeping downward between the neighboring pavers. The applicant's proposing in front of a couple of the new buildings to add a porous paving, so that's the reasoning for that comment. The applicant has addressed it by saying the owner's working with the soil scientists at this time to get that back to us. Comment two, show backflow preventer at tap locations on the main. Three, show rim elevations of all proposed and existing sewer manholes. Four, fire department comment to relocate the FDC at least thirty feet from the building in a landscape island, which would be in front of building one. Comment five, relocate fire hydrant from behind the existing building to within one hundred feet of that relocated FDC. Six, along the western property line between pavers and wetland, a silt fence will be needed and shown on plans. And seven, submit complete auto turn for the entire development to ensure a fire truck can maneuver through the site adequately. Staff comment eight has been addressed regarding the van-accessible handicap space in front of building one, so that can be removed at this time. With that, staff would recommend approval with comments.
Mitch, did, and I may have misunderstood you, did you say these buildings were originally approved, or were with the original site plan, or are these in addition to?
This, this is in addition, they came last year for the same exact addition, but they didn't submit in time and their site plan expired, so this is the same submittal from last year.
So I recall we did give them approval last time they were in here, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So nothing's really changed, other than we have an expiration of site plan and they're here to renew it. And staff is still recommending approval with comments.
Yes.
And if I heard you correctly, it still meets R six guidelines with this addition.
Correct, they follow basically at the maximum what R six allows.
Other questions or comments? Other questions or comments? Do I have a motion? I think since we gave them approval about a year or so better ago, this hasn't changed, so I don't see why we would make a difference today, so I'll make a motion to approve. I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Blakeney Amenities Center, 605 Dorster Drive. Owner developer, Land Solutions Company LLC. Mitch, you still got this?
Yep. This is a amenity center for the Blakeney subdivision, which is located on the corner of Dorster Drive and Rocky Fork, Almaville Road. It's at the entrance, one of the entrances to the new subdivision. Site consists of about 3.8 acres, and it's also shared on the same lot as an existing detention pond. Included in this amenity area would be a 288 square foot pavilion, which would be accompanied with a fire playground area and a mail kiosk for the development. Vehicle use area for the site, 4,510 square feet, which would require landscaping of 451 square feet. Applicants proposing 13,406 square feet. Parking, they're proposing about 20 spaces to serve the amenity area. And handicap requirement of one space, and they are showing four, too. Landscape plan shows variety of trees to be planted around the perimeter of the parcel behind the residential lots, which would create more or less a buffer effect. A couple canopy trees are also shown to be planted nearby the playground and parking lot area as well. Architecture elevation, just for the pavilion, shows rectangular structure with wooden posts and a metal roof, so nothing out of the ordinary for that. Couple standard comments for this. We had two staff comments regarding the proposed landscape square footage and the vehicle use area for the site, which both have been addressed by the applicant, so both of those staff comments can be removed. All that remains are the standard comments for this, and staff would recommend approval with those comments.
Questions for Mitch or staff?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, Decarama Homes Cabinetry, 5824 New Nashville Highway. Owner developer, Decarama Homes LLC. Hope I got the name right.
This is a proposed site plan for Decarama Homes, which is, sits on about 0.59 acres at 5824 New Nashville Highway. This property is owned C2. The proposed plan is for a 7,193 square foot storage supply warehouse and a showroom for cabinetry products. Currently, this lot is vacant and situated between two single-family homes with frontage on New Nashville Highway. Parcel utilizes a septic tank and has water service provided by CUD in this area. Vehicle use area for the site, 6,010 square feet, which would require landscaping of 601 square feet. Applicants proposing for 1,000. Total parking required of four spaces, and they're showing double with eight. Handicap parking space requirement of one, and they are proposing for one for this site as well. Landscape plan shows shrubs and trees along road frontage and lining the southern paved area. Oak trees are also proposed to be planted around the parking lot. Architecture elevations, we've received a revision from, since these packets went out. The new elevations show a mix of brick and EFS, with brick being the primary building material for this. Front elevations for the office show glass front with EFS accents and brick around the rest of the building. Couple standard comments. It does front New Nashville Highway, which is a TDOT road, so it will require a access permit from TDOT. Staff comments, all of which have been addressed for this. First comment was regarding the architectural elevations, not using a metal material, which they have revised to show more of a brick and EFS product. Comment two regarding the handicap space being inaccessible has been addressed. Providing asphalt or concrete access to all exterior doors has been addressed. Fire department access to the rear of the building has been addressed as well. There was existing buildings at the back of this property, three of, three old buildings, which are being shown as being removed. Conversion of the existing residential sheds, garage, which we just spoke about, are going to be removed, so that comment can be taken off. And then, being this product, this site does utilize a septic tank, we would require a permit from TDEC, which they have provided to us as well. So all that's left are the standard comments, and with those comments, staff would recommend approval.
So we have a commercial zone with a proposed commercial building that meets design review on a commercial or state highway? Okay. Questions for staff or further discussion? Kevin, is this in the same area that the cabinet shop was approved? This is all up towards... I mean, I'm sorry, a flooring...
It was a flooring company. It's in the same general vicinity, it's three or four...
Parcels?
Parcels up.
Same side?
Yeah, the same side of the road, same area, yes.
Seems like we had something come up a year or so ago out there, and design review is really important to us because it's becoming, it's extended out to where city limits goes now, so.
Yeah, I remember. I can't think what, was it the flooring store?
Yeah, it was a flooring company, yeah.
Okay. I like the fact you're meeting design review with brick and... Further questions for staff or discussion? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, so I have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item six, zoning ordinance amendment A, micro breweries, micro wineries, micro distilleries.
Yeah, this is, you mentioned this earlier in the agenda, this is a zoning ordinance amendment, text amendment. Amends several different parts of the zoning ordinance. Would have the basic effect, again, this was done kind of in response to some issues or some requests we've had, and so, again, currently that's, this use would only, manufacturing of alcohol at least would only be allowed in I-1, I-2, I-3, and A-1 districts. These would have, this amendments against various different sections of the ordinance, but all have the effect basically of allowing the manufacturing of alcoholic beverages in the C1 and C2 districts via special exceptional review by the Board of Zoning Appeals. There would be limits as to the size of the building, as well as requirements regarding outdoor stores, loading zones, screening, and parking. There are also several provisions within Tennessee code annotated that would apply. Those TCA provisions limit the amount of alcoholic beverages that can be produced annually to be considered a micro facility, amongst many other things. There's many things in there. We also will reference our municipal code with regards to how, what our municipal code does with regards to sales, and that they would have to obviously meet those provisions as well. Again, these are very much a draft. I've written, I want to obviously begin discussing this issue. We do recommend consideration of the amendment. We believe it would be a very, could be a very appropriate use in the commercial area of the Depot District, as well as potentially other areas of town. And that it would be a, create a BZI review of this, so it wouldn't just be a carte blanche. There would have to be additional review with a public hearing for the specific locations for neighboring property owners to share those concerns if they had any. Again, I did attach those amendments to the areas, the language that's new is double unreligned, and there's a little bit of removal of a couple things, but for the most part, we're, this is all new language. And I guess that's what I have.
Questions for Kevin?
Kevin, you may have mentioned it when we were talking, but you mentioned the Depot District, for example, and I know we have a historic overlay down there. Does this have any complication? Does it create any complication, meaning a historic district?
No, I mean, it's, it, the only, there is some differences in the historic district with regards to the, our...
Design.
Well, design and all those things, certainly. If someone in the historic district wanted to use an existing building, or if they wanted to build a new building, obviously there could be issues there that they would have to go to the Storage Zoning Commission. We also have some different rules in the Depot or the historic district with regards to alcohol sales, as well as where it's distance from churches and schools and those kind of things that would apply. But again, the, those issues are really more kind of outside the scope of the use of the property. The Historic Zoning Commission deals with the building color or design, not the use of the building.
Yeah.
That's governed by the base zoning.
Okay. I think we're going to see more requests from this as time goes on. It seems to be a trend that is catching on and actually sticking once it's there.
Well, we talked about it when we were working on our downtown master plan, that within that area, we, you know, something that's there, you know, we, things that we need there were restaurants or things that are destinations, you know, certainly that serve the community, but also maybe bring people from outside of the community to visit here. We have 308 units of residential going up in our downtown area, and obviously, this kind of, something, this type of use would fit with something where you might have more of an urban feel to a downtown area for the residents that live there. So we felt like it's a good move, and again, not just for that area, but that's what we include the C1 and C2 district, and maybe other locations where it makes sense as well. So that gives the Board of Zoning Appeals a chance to review us, you know, do they meet the criteria that we're talking about? This wouldn't carte blanche allow for large-scale operations in a C2 district. That's not appropriate. Those need to stay in the industrial district, but on a small scale, we thought it made sense.
Questions for staff? I think it brings up a good point. You know, the downtown area is something we've been working on for quite a while, the Lowry Street overlay. One of the reasons we did decide to go ahead and let the Alta Depot come in there was to create some business demographics there, some walkability, some destinations, make it more community down there in downtown area. And we're doing a lot down there with the Zama Park, and some of the things we're doing as a city and a town that we can do to do our part to dress it up and make that appeal to people. So I think you're right, this is a trend, and it's kind of a good fit for that area if it were to be brought in, so it's a good downtown draw.
Right.
You know, we've got ice cream shops and things down there now, and it's kind of the same thing, so.
Yeah, I think it complements it well. I mean, for a community, we are talent-rich in entertainment and the possibilities in the Depot area, so.
I like the BZI guys to take a look at it, too. You know, it puts that buffer there. I know council will have fun talking about this, probably next week or whenever it comes, so it's a good topic. I mean, I think it's something we need to look at. Other questions or discussion?
Move for approval.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussions or questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. November bond review report.
Yes, we've got several tonight, so I'll try to go through those quickly. First one is Amberton, section one. This one is close to being built out. I did, since the packets went out, I was able to talk with the developer, Century Communities. They did request, please send us the punch list, we want to go ahead and get to, start working on that. This is one we've had for about three years now, and so I do want to limit that extension to six months, try and get the work finished up in there so we can go to maintenance there. Cedar Hill, section one, phase one is, again, have talked with that developer, they did have finished the final topping in that section, and I did request that it could be reduced and begin the maintenance period. There's also a section one, phase two, that's a very small piece of this, and they have also finished asphalt in that one as well. That bond doesn't actually come up until May, but it made a lot of sense to us to go ahead and start the maintenance period now together, because there's so much overlap between these two phases. And so I would recommend that we combine those two together into one maintenance bond. The developer is very amenable to that as well. It's, and so I would recommend going ahead and extending, extending this for one year as a maintenance bond, reduce it to $15,000 for the combined, for both phases. Hidden Hills, section four, phase four, this is one that is built out, there's just one small item there regarding some stone on the temporary turnaround. Would be, would certainly recommend it, it could be released if everything gets done, otherwise we would need to extend that one. Same kind of situation on Hidden Hills, section four, phase three. They have finished, they have actually repaired those two utilities department items, so those can be removed, but they still need to, again, kind of repair that temporary turnaround. They did say they would get, would take care of it, so if they can get that done, certainly release it, otherwise to extend it. Villages of Green Tree, section one, phases one and two, this is one that they're, they've, we've had for a little while, they want to make sure this gets done, we want them to get it done, so they've been indicated and assured me they will get it done, so if they do, I would certainly would recommend release of that. Cedar Park, this is a small commercial development kind of between Rock Springs Road and Cedar Grove. They've only built on one of those lots, it's currently under construction, still some items to finish there. We have had it for a couple years, and we would, I would recommend a six-month extension there. Legacy, this is the resub of Lot 120. This is where the townhome project has been approved. We still have a plat approval in place with a final, with a public road, but the site plan approval has been approved to convert all that to private streets. Did talk to the developer, said please, please extend that one until we can get this agreement finalized with the developer, with the builder on the townhomes, so would recommend a six-month extension on that one. And then Buckingham Place, section three, this one is only about two-thirds built. Did talk to that developer again since the last packets went out, and he said they would, they're planning on paving in the spring, so I would recommend a six-month extension on that one to get, allow them to get that work done in the spring. That's all I got.
Questions for Kevin on the bond review? Do I have a motion to approve? Move to approve. A motion, and Mike, you have a second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the bond review reports. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Staff comments or other business?
I don't have anything else.
Jennifer, do you have anything tonight?
Not tonight.
Not tonight? Charles?
No, sir, I'm good, thank you.
All right, so next month for Jennifer, and you guys are still good. Counselor, Jeffrey L. Esquire?
Yes, congratulations to Timorel on his reelection.
Thank you, then. I was not solicited, but thank you very much. I look forward to serving for another four years, so thank you. Anything from the commission?
I want to thank Jennifer because she's probably feeling a couple pairs of shoes right now, since Mindy left, right? Imagine the staffs all work a little bit harder.
We are.
So thank you all for pulling it together and making it seem seamless to us.
Nothing else, we stand adjourned.